Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting in order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for November the ninth, 2021. Can I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Let the record show that you do have a quorum.
Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town. God, I ask that you watch over our elected body as we start these new terms, Lord. I ask that you watch over our citizens, Lord. Please watch over our fire and EMS and our police department. Be with our troops that are serving here and overseas, Lord. Be with us as we're here this evening and be with us throughout this week. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
All right. First on public presentations. Judy?
We'd like to welcome Clerk Charlene Nardicola, and she will be swearing in our newly elected officials. We do have to be sworn in tonight Mayor Marion, Commissioner Warnock, and Commissioner Shepherd.
You first.
Warnock can go first. We'll do the two commissioners first, okay?
Please repeat after me. I, Dave Warnock, do swear or affirm?
I do. I, Dave Warnock, do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I, Joe Shepherd, do swear or affirm?
I, Joe Shepherd, do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations. Please repeat after me. I, Travis Marion, do swear or affirm?
I, Travis Marion, do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Mayor.
Execute the office of Mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Four more years of people confusing us.
Before we move into public presentations, section B, we will be remaining with the current elected body and their current roles. Commissioner Shepherd will remain as Streets and Sidewalks Commissioner. Commissioner Braun will remain as Water and Sewer Commissioner. Commissioner Warnock will remain as Parks and Recreation Commissioner. And Commissioner Pearson will remain in his role as Public Safety Commissioner.
Should we affirm that?
Yes, and as Vice Mayor, we will be appointing, I'm putting the name of Pauline Braun forward for that role. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving forward into public presentation, section B, fiscal year '21 audit, findings, and results. Do you have that? Judy?
We do. I would like to welcome Karen Dochin to the podium to present. She represents WCS Accounting Firm.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. I am going to go through this page by page, so I hope you all had some coffee tonight. But I mean, seriously, we're going to go over this at a very high level. Anytime you have any questions or anything else regarding the audit, how it was prepared, what went into it, anything else, please just let me know, and I will address those as possible. If you have your audit reports, which it does not look as if anyone has them with them, I just assumed that they would have had them.
I have to apologize. I didn't, did you send hard copies over?
No. I don't know, they were mailed in a box. That's all, that's all I know is that they were.
Because I didn't have them. Let me go check to see if they're available.
Well, we can, in the meantime, we're just going to, we're just going to discuss. And rather than telling you, hey, look at this page or whatever, we're going to have a real high-level discussion. So the first thing that, the reason that there is an audit is so that you can receive an independent auditor's report. I will let you know that the audit was conducted not only in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, but also government auditing standards. This is required because you have a significant amount of funds which are from the USDA, and those funds from the USDA require that as long as you have at least a million dollars outstanding, the audit has to be done in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards. What's the difference between generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards? The difference being that, I, I know you know. I, I mean, you're smiling, I can tell you can tell. We are also required not just to make sure that the financial statements are materially correct, but also we are instructed to look at internal control and compliance with laws and regulations, and we issue a separate report on those two items. The independent auditor's report is actually the highest level of assurance that an accounting firm can provide to, to an organization, and we express this in an opinion. It is our opinion based on the procedures that we performed that the financial statements are materially correct in all respects and show the net position, the expenses, and the revenues for the Town of Rising Sun as of June 30th, 2021, and then also for the year then ended. The statement of net position, which is, could be viewed as a balance sheet if you were a for-profit organization, lets us know that as of June 30th, 2021, the town had $31,873,000 in assets. Your total liabilities were $23,186,000, and net position or equity for the town was $8,687,000. You may be asking yourself, so how does this relate to the previous year? Your net position actually dropped by $525,000 or your equity dropped. However, before alarms are raised, a lot of that, actually the majority of that, was based on capital assets which are depreciated. There are a significant amount of capital assets in the water and sewer funds, and those are depreciated on an annual basis as you are using up the capacity that they provide. All in all, cash increased by $617,000 for a total of $2337,000 as of June 30th. One item that I would like to bring to your attention is that this cash, cash position is approximately six months' worth of expenditures. So you have a fairly significant cushion. If you were to not bring another dollar in, you'd have about six months before you would burn through your cash. Also, a nice thing to have for the town. In addition, if we look at the activities that occurred during the year, all in all, total expenditures for the town were $4637,000. $1.7 million of dollars of that was for the governmental activities and $2.7 million for the water and sewer activities. Total revenues for the year for both funds were $3,862,000, compared to $3,896,000 in the previous year. So your revenues have remained relatively stable year over year. The expenditures dropped slightly in the current year. Both very good signs. All in all, there was, like I said, a total decrease in the overall financial position of the town by $525,000. There was excess change in the general fund of $251,000 and a decrease of $776,000 for the business-type activities, the water and sewer fund. Other than that, once everyone does receive their packets, I would hope that you would look through them, look at the details. There is a lot of good information that has been provided regarding your cash, regarding your capital assets, your liabilities, especially the long-term liabilities, and when they are expected to mature and to require payment. Are there any questions about the financial portion of the audit? I know I threw a lot of numbers out at you.
The number, we, we will understand the numbers, we'll see the packet. But to simplify, just for the people who may be watching, we are in a good financial situation.
You are in a relatively good financial position. Yes, you are.
That's, that's what they want to hear.
Yes, yes. You have significant reserves. You are able to cover your debt service. You have money that is set aside for specific purposes. And the cash that I discussed was not even cash that was restricted for a purpose outside of the organization by an external party.
Thank you.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, as part of the audit done in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards, we also issued a report on your internal control over your financial reporting. What we are charged with is providing any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies being items that are significant and should be brought to management or governance's attention. During our audit procedures, we did find one finding that we considered a material weakness, and a material weakness being something that could cause a misstatement in the financial statements. And as part of this, we did have several adjustments that were required to the original books that we were presented to audit. Those adjustments were material in nature. There were some receivables that were not recorded, liabilities that needed to be recorded. However, those were presented to the town treasurer, town clerk. They have been posted, and they are part of the audited financial statements as they stand. When it came to compliance, there were no findings regarding compliance. And that is all I was going to present unless you want me to start reading.
I mean, the only thing that I would add is I know that you guys reached out to me, and I certainly didn't have anything to add in regards to any type of misuse of funds or anything of that nature, but you guys did not find anything.
There was nothing that came to our attention. Now, I will caution you, however, though, that a financial statement audit is not designed to find every instance of fraud or misappropriation that could occur. But based on the procedures that we performed, there was nothing that came to light that warranted our looking deeper to try and find something. However, that does not say that there could not have been something.
Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you very much.
And follow-up with Judy to make sure that we get those booklets. It looks like maybe something went the mail.
They were, yes, they were mailed last week, and it's a package.
We still got a week or two that.
Yeah, unfortunately, the mail is.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get them by Christmas.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure what happened, but I apologize for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can I say one more thing while I'm still here, while I've got your attention? I do want to give thanks to Judy for all the assistance that she gave us this year doing the audit. You will notice that the audit reports, when you get them, were done prior to October 31st, when they are due to the state. That hasn't occurred in a couple of years. But Judy has worked very hard to improve the financial, financial reporting for this town, and she worked very closely with us, and it is evident.
I think that speaks volumes considering that we had outsourced at one time our accounting, and now bringing it back in-house for you to be able to say that. So that's kudos to you, Judy. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward into business meeting items, resolution 2021-13. Town Administrator, I don't mind reading this, but if you could give a brief overview of what we're looking at.
So this, we've had this conversation in passing over the last couple of months. Generally speaking, this resolution is going to make changes to the service charges, or the charges for service that we charge for things related to the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. You're going to see in the resolution itself that the fees actually predate me coming to the Town of Rising Sun in many cases. I came here in 2007, and a lot of these fees for services were in place prior to me being here. Commissioner Pearson, you can remember, I guess, back in 2009, we did make a subtle change to the variance in special exception application. I'm bringing this all up because I think it's important for people to realize that when an individual property needs to get a variance or a special exception, quite frankly, the real estate tax that somebody pays does not cover that cost. And the reason being is that it would not be fair for all the residents of the Town of Rising Sun to absorb the administrative, legal, and sometimes engineering fees associated with a land development application or a variance or a special exception. So that's the genesis of why there is a charge associated with that. Over the last couple of years, it's become very apparent that our outdated fees are not, they're simply not covering the cost of advertisement. We are required by state law to advertise certain things like variances and special exceptions in order to allow residents to come out and witness or comment on variances and special exceptions. Essentially, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm not suggesting the town is losing money on it, but what I'm suggesting is the money that we bring in from all the taxpayers is paying for that, and that's not necessarily fair. So what I did here is I looked at the charges at Cecil County and their land development department is charging, and there are certain things regarding annexations and other things that the county doesn't have to deal with. So I looked to some area communities to get an idea of that. Before you read the resolution, Mayor, what I'd like to do is just go through real quickly. I believe you guys have it in your packets. I've redlined the actual fee schedule itself, so you can see the recommended changes. One of the things you're going to see very often is that, we want to make sure, the way the fee schedule was originally written, it wasn't really clear that the individual had to pick up the cost for engineering, attorney fees, and things like that. So our fee schedule is set up into sections. So you're going to see new language under every section that sort of, you know, drives that point home. So at the top, you're going to see a Note 1, Note 2, and Note 3 under those sections. And that's basically just guiding people to the additional costs that they might have. I'm going to keep scrolling down until we get to page 12. And again, this is the beginning of a new section. This is regarding fire code plan review, plan review and inspections when people are submitting building permits for fire sprinkler systems and all. You have the same three notes listed there. Section four, the same thing. That's where you have a lot of miscellaneous permit requirements. And again, we're just re-highlighting those notes. Then when you get into section five, which is annexation, land development, and zoning fees, basically one of the changes that we are proposing is that the fee for annexation has always, and the town has been $500 for many years. Other communities have begun to charge additional money when you start to get to larger pieces of property. So we basically borrowed from another community that for, the $500 covers the first acre. Now bear in mind, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done in an annexation process, and that's why the fee is such as it is. But there's an additional $10 for every acre over an acre there. The other thing, and this gets to the heart of where we were losing money in variances or where you had to go before the Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals, was suggesting that the residential rates be raised from $250 to $350, and the commercial rate go from $500 to $600. Our most recent advertisements for the last couple of variances and special exceptions have cost us about $380. So the $250 is not covering that expense. The other thing, as you might recall, is that in order to get good qualified people on the board, we have passed a resolution a couple of months back to pay them $30 for meeting. And so you're really, you know, in the hole when you're trying to compensate people for participating in a very important process, and your fees are not covering that. I'm not suggesting that this fee is going to cover all of that because if we had a variance that went before the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals, we're looking at that cost for the one meeting being $360 before we even talk about the advertisement. So I wasn't, I'm not necessarily shooting for the goal of being revenue neutral. I just want to try to close that gap because at the same time, we want to try to make it reasonable for our residents that need to get variances and special exceptions. Then you get into item C as a good example. When you're in the land development process, we just had a flat charge of $500 for a initial site plan review, a concept plan review. If you look at the counties, Cecil County, for instance, and other communities, they break it down, they have a sliding scale based upon the number of units. I tried to make it as easy as possible, so I kept the, I'm proposing the flat rate be for a subdivision of under 40. Would, I'm sorry, 40 and under would pay the same $500, but for every additional unit over 40, there would be a $10 charge. And what that basically does is for the first 75 properties, we will actually be charging slightly less than what the county charges for the same 75 properties. But when you get over 75, we're break even with what the county charges, and as you get into really, really high numbers, we're about $25 more on it. But I didn't want to get into all the sliding scale that the county has. I wanted to make it simpler. The one thing that we were not charging for, which everybody charges for, is the recordation of the plaques. And that's when signatures have to be secured from the chairman of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals and different people. There's, there's a cost associated with getting those signatures because you actually sign about 12 plaques when you do that. So we just mirrored what the county was doing for plat, recordation. Sometimes you're going to have people, and anybody who's been on the Planning Commission in the past and most recently, you have seen some of the really odd zoning that we have in town. And your zoning is supposed to be consistent, but we have some instances where you can take five one-acre properties, and they all might have a different zoning. And part of the reason for that is quite simply because it was so easy to get a rezoning. And so other communities, and the county even does this, they charge for that, meaning that if, if, it's really got to be something that is needed, not just willy-nilly for the town to consider it. So the fee is consistent with what other communities are charging. And I'm going to say it this way, to sort of separate the serious people from the non-serious people. And I'll give you, give you an example of why this is important. We're running into an issue down in the Maple Heights development where the two remaining lots next to the veterinarian clinic, the developer has changed the zoning on that so many times because it was so easy that it took a little bit of unraveling to try to figure out what exactly the zoning is because they want to build two residential houses in there. And as it turns out, the last zoning the developer asked for is going to require a variance to basically build residential houses in a residential development. So again, you know, making this a serious thing by charging for this a reasonable amount sort of separates the, the serious and the non-serious because it does lead to problems for us down the road. After that, the only change you're going to see is because I added a new section, some of the other sections had to be changed accordingly. The other thing that our resolution is addressing is bulk trash pickup. And I realized that looking at this fee schedule, that we had a number for bulk trash pickup in this fee schedule that might not be consistent with what the charge is. If you remember, when we put the trash collection out the bid, we were no longer getting bulk pickup for free. So we have to pass along whatever that charge is. That charge is in a contract. And so my thought process is the contract has to be approved by the elected body, which we do. So if there are increments over a four-year period, instead of having to rush back and redo the fee schedule, let's just have it state that it's per the contract with the trash hauler. Because you essentially already approved that when you approve the contract. So that's just making it a lot simpler there by talking about what the bulk trash pickup fee is. And I believe fee is, and I believe that that covers everything in the fee schedule that would be changed.
All right, so I'm going to read into Record Resolution 2021-13, which is the Fee Schedule Amendment, Fees Related to Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, Land Development, and Bulk Trash Pickup. I'm going to skip the boiler, boiler plates. Whereas Title 4 of Division 1 of the Land Use Article titled "Zoning," states under Subtitle 1, titled "Power Subsection 4-101," titled "Statement of Policy," that the orderly development and use of land and structures require comprehensive regulations through the implementation of planning and zoning controls, and planning and zoning controls shall be implemented by local government. Whereas these plans, whereas these planning and zoning appeals are regulated by the Town of Rising Sun's Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Whereas the town is permitted to establish fees associated with the processing, fees associated with variances, special exceptions, and other approvals and reviews needed to ensure compliance with those planning and zoning controls. And whereas due to various costs associated with variances, special exceptions, and other land development processes, the mayor and board of commissioners want to ensure that the fees collected to these processes are equal to the cost of the town's review. And whereas the board previously adopted 2008-02, titled "Revisions to the Town of Rising Sun Fee Schedule," July of 2008, which establishes the fees associated with applications for variances, special exceptions, and other approvals and reviews before the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, and whereas after 13 years, the costs associated with the processes are greater than the fees collected. And whereas the existing fee schedule contains language requiring non-refundable deposits to be collected with each permit application, and language regarding the reimbursement of the town for administrative, attorney, and engineering fees and advertising costs, but the intent of the requirement is not clear, and whereas the mayor and commissioners wish to clarify the reimbursement of town costs for building, land development, and zoning services. And whereas the town provides for the collection of bulk waste, such as furniture and other large or voluminous waste items that are collected by the town's contracted waste hauler, these rates are part of the contracted price submitted by the waste hauler and approved by the mayor and commissioners as part of the trash and recycle contract. These prices fluctuate at times, and the fee schedule is better served by representing this charge for service as per contract price with the waste hauler. Therefore, be it enacted and resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun are modifying the existing town fee schedule to clarify the intent of the resolution and to reflect increased costs therewith, and to ensure that these costs are borne entirely by the applicant seeking the approval and services. The proposed changes highlighted in red can be found and identified starting on Page 3 and ending on Page 18 of the attached titled document, 2021 Town of Rising Sun Fee Schedule, Recommended Updates, November the 9th, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 9th day of November 2021. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
It's been moved and seconded.
Any more discussion? I think the town administrator went over that pretty well, and as he said, it's in the fee schedule. This fee schedule will be posted online as well, correct Calvin?
Yes.
All right. Could I get a motion and a second is already on the floor? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward into citizens' input, would anyone like to speak this evening?
I don't know where my signs are that I asked about.
Signs.
We'll, we'll talk about that. I'll get with you. Yeah, because Calvin and I already had a conversation about it, so we'll talk to you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Moving forward into staff reports. Office manager?
I don't have anything to report, other than we're going to have a job interview tomorrow. We're looking at picking up more staff for town, and other than that, things are good.
Chief?
I have no report.
Town administrator?
No report.
Town attorney?
Let me bring the town.
I have a report, can you please? I wanted to let you all know, and I'm sure you're aware, that there's a debacle that we had on whether contact was made with the county on the Main Street property and the avenue and the tax issue, say. We saw that because we recontacted the county, gave them the information that we had given them already on the proposal of how we can resolve the tax issue, and the lack of information was sent, and we came out last week, and we have gotten acknowledgement and response. So any questions, all was in their court.
And just to clarify, Jay, this is in regards to 16 East Main Street, correct?
16 East Main Street.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Town engineer?
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well tonight. Some brief updates on, on my end. This is Ryan Byrdley, before I pass it off to Scott. Our I&amp;I plan that I mentioned last time, that we're preparing for the town, it is nearing completion, I inserted that here on my desk later this week for my final review before I submit it to Calvin. It's a multi-year plan for addressing I&amp;I, any fish away, a way to implement it into other contracts that are in the C I P. So once I get that submitted over to the town, I look forward to having a follow-up conversation and come up with a strategic approach that works best for everyone. I know there's been, Calvin knows there's been a lot of coordination today, so just a heads up that the latest comp plan updates performed by Sean and Aaron, they were completed and submitted over to the town, so you have that, and if you need anything else done on that, please, please just let us know. We're more than happy to help with any additional change that you may want to see there. Our active water, wastewater engineering project currently is the Mount Street Water Engraving Project. You may have noticed, our survey crew has mobilized, so they were out there performing the field survey for the next couple of weeks. Those are the major updates on my end, but as always, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have, or if you'd like me to drill deeper into any of these topics.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you. I will pass it off to Scott.
Good evening, everyone. This is Scott Koenig from the Land Development Division of KCI. The active project that we are working on right now is the 2021 Roads Program. The contractor has finished paving on both Turtleback Court and Mason Run Lane, and has milled both Pearl Street and Carruthers Street. Paving on Pearl and Carruthers is scheduled to begin tomorrow. Hopefully, it will either be finished late today tomorrow or sometime early on Thursday, and then we're working with the town manager on one other site to try to get some work done related to his request, and we expect to be doing a final walkthrough probably next week for the sites on the program, and then we will be processing billing here in the next couple of weeks on the 2021 program. I think all the concerns or complaints that we've received on the program so far have been resolved, and the contractor has been working very diligently to get complete, so we expect to be wrapping the program up the next, hopefully about the end of this week. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, let me just say that you made my neighbors very happy. Unfortunately, I'm sorry about giving you the bad information, well, it wasn't bad, it actually turned out to be true, about the sub-bases in that development. It's a shame that whoever put the initial paving in didn't do it right, or it wouldn't have taken you as long to do, because I watched them just scrape dirt up. There was nothing there.
We appreciate the advice and think the accommodations that the contractor made and the changes that we made to the pavement section were both well-received in the field by the, by the residents, and it's given what I think is a high-quality road to go into the future, so we're hopeful that there will be no problems. All the base issues, even though we had to mill a little bit deeper, it seemed as though we had a good base to build upon, so I think the pavement section that's been put down is good and will last a long time.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, the one thing I'd like to add for the benefit of Commissioner Warnock, the other location that he's talking about is Veterans Park, and I want to thank Judy and the Public Works Department, they did go down there and install horizontal drains across the whole front of the parking lot to receive any water that runs off Coke's Court into the parking lot, and they are going to be installing drains in that wetlands area leading up to.
It's not wetlands, let's be clear.
Yeah. The wet area.
The wet area.
Yeah, the wet area, they're, they're installing drains in there, they're going to raise that sidewalk that is just naturally sunk and ran.
Both of them, the one by the parking and the one by the playground?
Yeah, and they're going to discharge that piping out to daylight on the other side, so that, that's what, when they completed the work.
Basically, we've previously discussed.
We're asking, we asked Scott to add that to the paving contract, so there would be a nice clean parking lot down there. Also, I wanted to let the board know, I think you already know, the line striping in Valley View has been completed also. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Moving into the mayor's report. My report's just going to be in regards to what is a third term as mayor. First and foremost, I want to say a huge thank you to God, to my mom, to my grandparents, thank you to my supporters, the colleagues here on the Board of Commissioners, our town employees, and our police department. This is truly an exciting time for the Town of Rising Sun. Major infrastructure projects have been completed, and a rebirth of our Main Street has happened. We have filled over 90% of what was a largely vacant Main Street. Rising Sun has been and has become a community to watch. We've received significant attention from state and federal leadership. Economic development is still at the forefront of our minds as we work to bring a variety of new businesses and services to our community. We have many exciting new projects and events to look forward to. The future of our community will be decided by the actions of this Board of Commissioners plus the active involvement of our citizens. I just want to say thank you to Rising Sun for taking a chance on me. I promise you that I will give this position all that I have for as long as I am here. Moving forward into Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Braun.
I have no report.
Commissioner Pearson.
I have two things. First of all, the striping in Valley View looks really good. Would like to remind the residents that having multiple vehicles in a household creates problems for other households. There are a few there that have many vehicles that they take up too many parking spots for the other residents. I want them to be mindful of their neighbors, that the parking is not for as many vehicles as you want to park. So, the second thing, Calvin, I realize this is extremely late in the game, but the worst part of Pearl Street is not going to get repaved, and as it was said to me today, why waste all the money till you get up by the middle school and it's nothing but like going over speed bumps? Is there anything, I know that is in the water part of the project that we're, that we're just getting into, is there anything they can do to help smooth that area out?
Well, I, I did have a conversation in Commissioner Shepherd, I included you in on the email today. They've had the contractor look at Mount Street and Pearl Street, and our concern is, within about four months, we're going to tear up anything that we put down there, but recognizing that there are still things that we would like to get done, I have asked the engineer, Mr. Koenig, who's still on the, on the call here, that is there anything that we could do in-house, whether it be hand applying, and, and let me back up and say, the concern that they had was, if we try to do any kind of milling, and Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong in what my understanding of what you told me, if they bring that heavy equipment out there and start doing something with basically a temporary overcoat on it, it's not going to last, because any of the defects that are in the road that we are not seeing yet are just going to become exasperated with the milling process, and so anything that we would put down would probably deteriorate in a very short amount of time. Recognizing that there are things that are obvious, like potholes, I back up and say, that's why I asked Scott to give us a recommendation on what we could do in-house without big equipment, just hand applying, whether it's cold patch, blacktop, whatever, so, you know, administratively, we share the same concerns. We were hoping to be able to just put a temporary patch over that and call it a day, but the amount of money we would have to spend to do that is really troublesome to just basically tear it up in another four months.
And it's not that, it's not that that portion of the road's not going to be done, it's just that it's going to be done at a later time because of the infrastructure that's going to go on the ground, right?
Well, I, I, people understand it, it's just.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
The frustration comes, you come up Pearl, after Summer Hills paving, people like what happened.
Yeah.
They, they expect that it will be the same way on Pearl Street till you get up to the middle school, and it's like, why did we spend all this money doing Pearl Street? We didn't.
Right.
No matter how much you want to explain, that it's another, it's an infrastructure situation, it's going to take, all they see is, we still have the same potholes.
Right.
The same speed bump situation.
Right. Just so you're aware, to revisit it, we did go out on social media and give people the heads up a couple of months back that, you know, we were going to, we were going to, we recognized there's something that needs to be done on that, but we did notify people that the road's going to be torn up again in a couple of months. But long story short, we'll figure out something to make it better than what it is.
Last thing I want to do is, is waste money, paving over top of infrastructure's going to be torn out anyway.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past, and that's always been, I'm glad we're moving past doing things like that.
We can explain that, but at the same time, to the contractor's credit, they did such a good job that now people are happy.
Yeah.
And now they just want to keep this going, this, this good feeling.
I think, I think Wilson Avenue is a great example of that, where we had a lot of infrastructure work that needed to be done, and we knew we had a road that was in really bad shape.
Oh, yeah.
We received a lot of complaints about it, you know, it was understandable complaints, and we, we wanted to resolve it, but it just didn't make sense to fix Wilson Avenue until that infrastructure was completed, it would have been a waste, and I, I think we just, you know, do the best we can to explain.
Yeah.
That, that there's infrastructure's got to go in the ground first, and, you know, we apologize for the delay, it's going to take time for that engineering and construction to be completed, and, and it just is what it is.
Yeah.
You know, that we will, it will get better, and it's a much more cost-effective way of addressing it with citizens.
I don't think there's, I don't think they have an argument that way.
Yeah, we're trying to be good stewards of.
All of a sudden, they, they got something nice now, they, they want to keep, they keep going with something nice.
Yeah, no, that's understood.
All right. Commissioner Shepherd?
No report tonight.
Commissioner Warnock?
Um, no report, thank you.
All right. Moving forward into upcoming town meetings, we have our next town meeting on November 23rd. Upcoming town events, don't forget our Winter Extravaganza, which is going to be on December the 4th from 3:30 PM to 8:00 PM. We will have a ice skating rink in Main Square, and I can promise that we will have snowfall. Veterans Day, Town Hall will be closed on Thursday, November the 11th, and then Thanksgiving is on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th. If you need trash recycling and yard waste schedule, it is in the agenda as well as online. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing nothing, can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.